The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilors Ray Walt, Fitzgerald, Nat Big, Chehadi, Bynum, Phillips, Spread, Six present, one absent, your honor.
Very good, Fran. Folks, would you all rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome, everyone. Item number four on tonight's agenda, communications from citizens. We have some items to get, some housekeeping to get through first, so Jerry, if you'll meet me at the podium?
Your show. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to recognize a few All Steel employees, not for making outstanding officer, office furniture, which we all know they do, but for actually saving a coworker's life. On May 7th, 2014, at 11:09 a.m., an All Steel employee unexpectedly collapsed at work and suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. This employee was unconscious, not breathing, and did not have a heartbeat. He was clinically dead. Luckily for this employee, there are people trained at All Steel who knew exactly what to do to save his life. According to the American Heart Association, nearly 383,000 out-of-hospital sudden cardiac arrests occur annually. The sad truth is that most people don't survive a cardiac arrest. Four to six minutes is a window of opportunity for someone to act before it's too late. CPR and AED programs help increase survival rates. Immediate CPR can double or even triple a victim's chance of survival. I know HNI has been dedicated to safety and training through ongoing safety programs, but in this case, their safety program geared towards training employees in first aid, CPR, and AED usage paid off by saving a man's life. After speaking with fire department paramedics, I was advised that these folks were doing such an outstanding job on CPR that they advised them to continue so our paramedics could focus on performing advanced life support procedures, such as starting an IV, administering medications, and placement of an endotracheal tube to secure an airway. The fire department transported the patient to Trinity, Muscatine, then later to Genesis East in Davenport for further care. On May 12th, the sudden cardiac arrest victim was discharged from Genesis East with no deficit. This is an amazing testimony of bystander CPR and early defibrillation. If not for the quick response of All Steel's first responders, their coworker may not be alive today. So, on behalf of the city of Muscatine and the Muscatine Fire Department, we would like to recognize Tom Peck, T.J. Riley, and Bill Fairman with the Muscatine Fire Department Meritorious Civilian Award. This is the first time this award has been given out. The Meritorious Civilian Award is presented for actions termed "outstanding performance" in actions related to life and/or property. Now, along with Mayor Hopkins, I would like to present the individual awards.
Thank you for your service. Okay, a little bit more housekeeping. We have a presentation that's going to be made this evening, so... I get to do both duties.
A little green housekeeping. So, yes, this evening, I'm going to go through pretty briefly the long effort that we put into over the course of two and a half years to earn Muscatine's, the city of Muscatine's, first lead certified facility, which is the Muscatine Fire Station Number Two. So, today is an awesome day. Well, actually, March 7th, officially, 2014 was the awesome day that Muscatine, the city of Muscatine, has earned its first lead certified facility, so let's clap for that. I've prepared, for chief viewers, I've prepared a packet that has four different documents. One is the final lead checklist, which is in a spreadsheet form, but it details every single credit that the project earned and the performance values that the facility that you have is currently, was designed and is currently performing at, so that you have an idea of just how green or environmentally friendly the fire station is, and I encourage you to design to those standards in the future. I'm going to briefly go over those with you and those in the room, just so you have an idea and you can take it home with you. We earned 40 points. It takes 40 points to get certified, but let me tell you, the points that unfortunately we weren't able to achieve, it is mathematically calculated to be correct that you, we would have earned 49 points, which put it closer to a silver certification, but unfortunately, we determined that those points were, it was more crucial to get certified, and those points would have taken us into a round of appeals that we chose not to go down. But, starting with the site that was chosen and its location of the facility, we earned a total of 11 points out of a possible 22 points with the current, with the rating system that we were working within. And of those points, we earned the following performance values of the, with the effort to design the facility to promote alternative transportation. As you know, the location is outside of the main part of the city. To promote alternative transportation for not only the firefighters that work there, but also other city officials and citizens, over 12 and a half percent of the parking space that's dedicated is dedicated for carpool parking, and that's a dedication to promoting multiple passengers per vehicle coming out to the site, as opposed to individuals driving their cars, which is better for the environment. We also earned points for promoting low-emitting and fuel-efficient vehicles. We have dedicated parking for smaller vehicles or vehicles that pass, far surpass vehicle emissions ratings. We also made sure that there was proper bicycle storage and facilities for cyclists to then, once they get there, clean up, freshen up, and get ready for the day. So, in all those categories, we earned multiple points. Second of all, the site itself and the stormwater design went through the roof. In fact, it's a model design. You should feel very proud for it, because there is zero water that's conveyed off-site. All stormwater is, all of the stormwater runoff and stormwater quality is maintained and filtered and cleaned on-site. In that credit category, we earned over three points, plus, as a regional priority point, we were able to achieve that. Moving on to water efficiency, because the city chose not to install permanent irrigation systems, but instead to install native plant species, trees and grasses, and native plants that are, well, basically can handle periods of drought, as well as periods of lots of water, they went with a native landscape, and that alone awarded us a total of four points. So, no permanent irrigation systems, instead planting plants that are native to Iowa, and that was a home run for our project. We unfortunately didn't earn the four points that the building was designed to achieve in terms of water efficiency, that is pertaining to the fixtures that are in the facility, lavatories, showers, so on and so forth. It became a discrepancy between the understanding of living quarters and how firemen and women operate 24 hours a day in living quarters, not a regular office building. Nonetheless, the facilities is equipped with, with water fixtures, water-saving fixtures, that achieve 40% water savings over a standard building, so you should feel good about that, and designed for that in the future. The other category that we did really well in was energy and atmosphere, and that is essentially designing the building to be as energy efficient as possible, knowing and designing for the type of occupancy, which is 24/7, as we know, and pretty unpredictable, right? Because we just don't know when we're going to have an emergency. The facility was designed to perform, let's see, 30.4% more efficient than a standard building. There were some discrepancies over how we modeled the facility to perform and how the USGBC perceived our model, and so we ultimately came in at seven points at a 24.7% more energy-efficient building than a standard building, which is still something to be very proud of. The other, the final category is in materials and resources and innovation and design. Materials and resources is basically deciding what type of materials that you want to have in your facility, as well as on the exterior of your facility, and with the design and the idea that you're going to choose wisely, choose your vendors and where the products are coming from, what they're made of, and also, especially the materials on the interior, what your occupants are living and breathing around, because we do have 24/7 occupancy. In that category, we earned a total of four points, and the biggest performance factor is 25.79% of your total material cost and investment in that facility. The materials contained recycled content, so over a quarter of the material value was recycled content. Pretty amazing. And then lastly, choosing your vendors wisely. Your performance achieved a 49.54%, so over half of the material investment came from local suppliers, that is within 500 miles of Muscatine. Saves on shipping costs and also supports your local economy, which is great. And then lastly, innovation and design. We were able to earn a total of five points in innovation and design, and those were some of our hardest sought-after points at the end of the day. But, again, we maximized the fact that the site itself not only treats all of the stormwater, but it also is a beautiful, beautiful open space, whether you're coming from the front of the building or the back of the building, and that is a category in which you're maximizing open space, so that your facilities and your occupants, your facilities are a spot that people want to spend time at, and it also allows you to, once you're in the building, to look out and see views, which promotes healthier occupants' work behaviors. And then, lastly, we earned a very special credit in community connectivity, and I think Jerry was the one that helped me narrate, narrate for that special credit in which we highlighted all of the points at which the firemen and women reached out to the community for additional support, not only budgetary support, but also just, hey, it makes sense. We all want to see this happen. And in that case, we had a local tree planting group donate all of the trees. We had a local, a very big local business donate the land value, as I understand it. We had a lighting company, Musco Lighting, donated some of the exterior lighting, so as you can see, and then we had Iowa Renewable Energy Association come down and, and help do some trainings with your firemen and women on what to do if you have a facility that has renewable energy systems and the building is on fire. So, we had all kinds of local outreach pertaining to the building. It was really a great project and really fun to work with, and because of that, I've assembled this packet. You can review all the performance factors yourself, and I also have put together a reconciling projected and actual energy performance report, which I provided with chief viewers. You can look and see how the building was designed to perform and how the building is actually performing from an energy standpoint. From an energy standpoint, from electricity, it's performing just over 40% better than designed, actually, so you're saving lots of dollars in carbon emissions there. From a natural gas standpoint, because we've had a couple of harsh winters, we've actually gone over the projected consumption of natural gas, but the delta between the two, you're still performing even more efficient than designed, which then brings me to my last point, which is that when applying for Energy Star certification, design certification, you achieved a score, your facility achieved a score of 97. You only need a 70 to become Energy Star certified, so I encourage you to take it to the next level, because you qualified for the Energy Star design. I encourage you to take it to the next level and get an Energy Star certification for your facilities, just as you have now achieved. Your lead certification for your facility, and I'd like to present the mayor, with your lead plaque. This is the lead certified plaque for your facility.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And as I said, as of May 7th of this year, you have been officially lead certified at the Muscatine Fire Station Number Two, and this
Oh, look at that.
Beautiful plaque, certificate right here is yours to frame and place anywhere you choose.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. I don't think the mayor told us who you were, who you are.
My name's Kimberly Dickie. Just a very brief overview of I am, who I am. When I was first working on the project, I was independent consulting as a lead consultant. I'm still and always will continue to be a lead consultant. I also teach webinars on green building research through an institute, a virtual institute, but my full-time job now is I am the energy manager for the Iowa Army National Guard. So, in addition to my multiple other locations that I have to be in, we have over 400 buildings across the state of Iowa, I spend quite a bit of time in your other lead certified facility in town, or the other certified facility in town at the Armory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not quite done with housekeeping yet. One more item. Mr. Jenkins, Greg, I think that you are on.
Oh, tax increment financing? Yeah, I'll kick things off here. You may recall the large report by Greg's feet, the Iowa reinvestment district application was submitted here a little while back, and in that application, it notes that about 15% of the $41 million project would be funded through tax increment financing. We wanted to bring back a proposed outline of the terms and conditions for a proposed TIF agreement, should the plan move forward June 20th with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. What we've done is simply, working with Nancy and Greg and Tom and Ann Meeker, we have a spreadsheet before you, and the two highlighted categories at the top are the proposed terms and conditions, a 20-year TIF program, declining, excuse me, declining scale, starting at 100% and ending at 50% at the end of the term. Again, there's $41 million investment. The Iowa State study indicates it'll be about 98 jobs regionally created with this program. That $41 million investment really only generates $12 million in increment for this project, and so we split that into two categories. $7 million for the hotel and conference center roughly, and about $5 million for the ramp, the parking ramp and the connecting bridges, and you'll see that the bottom amount's about 3.5 million and nearly 2.5 million are generated through the proposed TIF program. And, let's see here. I guess for tonight's purposes, Tom and Ann Meeker are putting together some additional information for the IEDA to review at their June 20th meeting, and we wanted to be able to include this information as well in that, in that submittal going forward. Now, of course, should we be asked to submit a full application following that June 20th meeting, we'll have to put together the ordinance, the actual agreement for the district, the actual TIF agreement as well, but tonight, I was just looking for consensus from the council on, on moving forward with the proposed terms and conditions. Greg?
Greg Jenkins with the Greater Muscatine Chamber of Commerce and Industry, and I won't be long. I try to be brief when I come here, but I just want to let you know that the chamber is behind this project. We believe that we've demonstrated with the businesses in this community that there's a need and a division of what could happen with that riverfront married to this hotel and convention center project is an awesome thing to consider, and we hope you'll support it. We're here to, we will answer questions if we can, and Steve Boka was also great in pulling us together, and we appreciate his help. Also, make sure you know that Ann and Tom could not be here tonight, because they are on another project relative to this application, so they weren't able to come here tonight. They had to be out of town this evening, but they did regret not being able to make it.
Okay, so you're looking for consensus from council?
Yes. This, you know, the terms and conditions here are a little outside our normal. Of course, the city administrator can bring back a 10-year, 50% program. Anything over and above that needs council consensus to move forward. The application that the council did consider included 15% TIF financing to move the project forward. This is basically how we can get there, and I just wanted to bring it forward for any discussion and comment from council and a consensus to move forward.
How does this affect our bonding? Every year, budget time, we go through our geodat and all this. Is this something we can do on an annual basis, or is this, we are going to do an annual?
Yes, we can do it on an annual basis, and that, we'll put the agreement together, and we typically include that portion in the actual agreement. And yes, then it's only the amount that you rebate it on an annual basis.
So, do you know an approximate amount of bonded indebtedness plus the TIF, where?
Capacity.
Capacity, yeah, okay, that's a good term. The capacity left, what's left? Is that a number you can come up with, or get it to me later?
We can get it to you. We discussed it at our, at our last meeting. We've got about $400,000 annually that would be added to our debt limit, but we had substantial room.
I was thinking we did, but I-
We had substantial room under the policy. We have a separate policy, and we were, we were buddying up against that program, but we were going to bring back recommended changes to the council at some point regarding that policy, but we had, we had substantial room in our overall bonded indebtedness.
Okay, okay.
Especially if we include the annual appropriation.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, council?
Just to recap, then, just a portion of this total project is then TIF eligible? I mean, the, it has to be buildings and 12 million?
Typically, the infrastructure, any equipments, internal fixtures, et cetera, would not be eligible. So, you have a $41 million actual investment in these three or four components, but an assessed value of around, or an increment of around 12 million after the project's complete.
As much for public knowledge, is anything, and also, this TIF is a little bit different because of the, because it's internal than others?
The re, all, well, all TIF rebate agreements, the rebate is generated from the taxes paid by the developer.
So, there's no tax dollars, as a citizen wondering if there's, his tax dollars are going towards this?
Only those tax dollars paid by the developer.
By the developer.
That's, that's my point.
Yes.
That's what I want to make sure that the public understands.
As long as we're on this side of the, of the, Mike, do you have any comments?
They're, they're doing a great job.
Okay.
Answered my questions. Thank you.
Tom?
No, I understand it. Thank you.
Bob?
It's fine.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Very good. We will continue to press forward and keep your fingers crossed for the 20th.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Excuse me, just one final question that we'll know by the 20th, or?
The, the next meeting is on June 20th, and we should know at that point in time whether or not they are going to recommend preliminary approval. I can't remember the exact term, but preliminary approval. If you do not make it at that June round, the next funding round will be March of 2015.
If, if we get the preliminary approval, when do you think the final approval might be?
Thirty days, 30 days after that, after a submittal of the, well, 30 days after submittal of the final application.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Is there anyone else in council chambers that has an issue or an item they'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda? Now would be the time to come to the podium. Okay, well, we will move along to the consent agenda. Following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's request, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A, items 8A through J, filing of communications, which is 12A through F, and tonight's bills totaling
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Secretary.
Bob, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posey? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, dropping down to item 10 from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat for the lifetime subdivision. The preliminary and/or final plat has been submitted for a three-lot subdivision located east of the Hauser Street and/or Cedar Plaza Drive intersection. The intent of this subdivision is to allow for the immediate construction of a dental office on proposed Lot 1. Proposed Lot 2 will be reserved for future residential development. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott, in a second?
Second.
Second, Phil, any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Scott, and Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
No, Jeanette, Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item 11, 11A. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve contracts for the police, fire, and blue-white bargaining units. Each of these contracts is for a five-year period. The pay increases in each year are 22.25, I'm sorry, back up 2.25, 2.5, 2.75, 2.9, and 3%. This is an across-the-board adjustment for police and fire. In the blue-white unit, the effective increase is the same, however, some adjustments have been made based on market comparisons. The blue-white unit's increase also reflects the addition of a long-term disability plan. All three bargaining units have agreed to changes in their contribution towards health insurance. In year or two of the agreement, there will be an increase in the deductible and out-of-pocket maximum to $600 to $1,200, $1,200 to $2,400. In years three through five, there will be a 1% increase each year in the premium contribution for an employee, an employee makes. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
It's Bob, second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Tom, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the official pay plan for non-union employees of the City of Musketeen effective July 1st, 2014. The pay plan includes a request to change the title of planner and/or community development coordinator to community development coordinator. It has been adjusted, it has been adjusted to reflect the 2.25 percent increase budgeted by city council. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom?
Second, your honor.
Second, was that, Phil?
Yes.
Any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Tom?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing to consider the lease of certain premises located at the Musketeen Municipal Airport for fixed base operations with the City of Musketeen. Over the past 25-plus years, the city has engaged the services of a professional fixed base operator, or FBO, to conduct airport operations under lease. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. The hearing will take place on Thursday, June 19th, at 2014, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Scott?
Second.
Second, Osama, any discussion? And this is a roll call, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting completed work and authorizing final payment for the harbor dredge pipe project. The city entered into an agreement with Hagerty Earthworks in the amount of $66,372.90 for construction of the dredge pipe and connections along the harbor. The project is now ready to close out. No change orders were necessary, and bid quantity adjustments totaled $283.60 for a final contract amount of $66,656.50. It is the city engineer's recommendation, city council accept the completed work and authorize final payment to Hagerty Earthworks. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That was Phil?
Second, your honor.
And a second, Osama, any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the police department to purchase eight TASER X26P units. As a part of the 2014-2015 budget request, city council provided funding to purchase the new generation of TASER, TASER-conducted energy weapons to replace a portion of the department's current stock. It is staff's recommendation that TASERS be purchased from TASER International in the amount of $7,494.40, which includes the first-year TASER Assurance Plan. The purchase will be paid from the 2013 Justice Assurance Grant. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Tom, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the airport manager's agreement for the Musketeen Municipal Airport. Over the last 30-plus years, the city has engaged the services of a professional airport manager. The agreement provides for hours of operations, maintenance of the buildings and grounds, mowing, snow removal, insurance coverage, and related management responsibilities as set out in the agreement. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Bob? And a second?
Second.
Second, Osama, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the closure of East Second Street for repairs to the Hawn Overpass. The overpass, located on Second Street between Oak Street and Mulberry Avenue, was damaged by a commercial waste hauling vehicle. Repairs to be made by Kalachi Construction, my apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, require the closure of Second Street. The closure will begin June 6th, 2014, and will last approximately two weeks. Kalachi Construction will provide traffic control, and the city will assist. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So.
Mike?
Moved, yep.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Osama, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve change order number two for the Colorado Street Reconstruction Project. The city entered into a contract with higher construction for this project. The northbound, the northbound Wrightchurn Lane from Park Avenue to Colorado Street was designed as a new concrete with an asphalt servicing. For longer life, decreased construction time, and less testing costs, staff is proposing the use of full-depth concrete without asphalt. The Iowa Department of Transportation concurs with this proposal. The change order will decrease the contract amount by $1,238. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Phil?
Second.
Second, Tom, any discussion? Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the extension agreement with City Carton. City Carton has been providing recycling services for the recycling center and transfer station since 1995. This extension agreement, which is effective 2014 through 2019, consists of a fixed monthly payment of $1,750 by City Carton for the use of the city's facilities. That will increase by the percentage of the lesser municipal index, or 3%, on July 1st of each of the following years. All other services will remain the same. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Bob, and a second?
Second.
Second. Scott, any discussion?
I just had one question for Laura. It talks about the municipal index.
We ask that, we either use the municipal cost index, or it has a maximum 3% increase on an annual basis. Municipal cost index is just an index related to municipalities and the increases that we see in our industry.
Okay.
My, my question was, how does this rent compare to similar facilities? Per, cost per square foot, the equipment provided, da-da-da-da-da-da.
Since City Carton has been with the City of Musketeen at this facility, we have had an agreement where we were paid $5 per ton for every item, per ton that was baled, a material brought into the facility. And $10 for every ton the City of Musketeen brought in off of our trailers. Obviously, we do not have as much coming in from the trailers because we only have one drop-off point. And when it came time to renew this contract, City Carton is doing business a little bit different than what they've been doing in the past. They receive some things already bailed from industry, larger industry. And when I sat down with them and talked to them about their contract renewal, we looked at the options of, do we continue what we're doing right now, which I don't feel is a very fair payment to the City of Musketeen for utilizing our services? And we looked at what was the average cost that we were getting a payment, the city got over the last year, and it came to about $1,500 a month. I negotiated back and forth with them on this, and we came to a happy ground that, starting at the base pay of $1,750 a month. Now, as far as other services with other facilities, many facilities around the state operate the recycling side themselves along with solid waste services, so I don't really have a comparison. But I feel that we are getting paid more than what we have in previous contracts to keep them here and have the service available.
Good.
We have an escalator in our previous contract.
Okay.
No, there was not.
But is there, um, between the, this is for a two, this is a two-year agreement, so within this next two years, could we get somebody to take a look at the square footage based, for the, for a manufacturing type similar to this and see what the cost per square foot of rent would be? Understand, Greg?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I get a note.
So I want to know what comparable is. Yeah, market.
You have that, right, Greg?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Osama?
Can the company who does the recycling in town here do the same, perform the same job?
Allied Waste?
Yeah.
City Carton does things a little different than Allied Waste. Allied Waste currently doesn't have a recycling facility in the Quad City area. They certainly do do recycling services. It's not something they branched into. Currently, the location where all our recyclables that are picked up at the curb, they are dropped off at a transfer location in Rock Island, and then they go over near Chicago where they're backhauled when the facility there brings waste to Rock Island. The private sector, the private sector moves trash all around and recycling, so it's a little different situation. This certainly is something that in the future, if, you know, wanted to discuss, but I really believe City Carton has done a very nice job for this, what our options are in our community. They've been here a long time.
The reason I ask, if you bundle the whole thing with the recycling, would that give you any benefit for rates?
I'm not sure, because they're dealing with a lot of equipment. You're dealing with bailers, you're dealing with markets, and the markets are always fluctuating. And materials, and I know City Carton's changed their process a little bit more, and so this, this still gives us the services we need to provide with actually making more income to have them at our facility, to offset other costs.
Laura, we get a minimal, the city gets a minimal benefit from, other than the rent from having City Carton on-site there, I mean, what, they're basically just renting space from the city for their private operations and the community.
Basically, 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 that's what they're doing, plus, um...
Allied handles our recycling needs, other than at the facility.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's two different, we have two different recycling programs, and I think that's, can be confusing to people that aren't in the midst of it every day. We have our Allied Waste Recycling Program, which is curbside, City of Musketeen-only collection, and then we get into the City Carton side of it, which operates for businesses in the entire Musketeen County area.
So could you put together a list of the benefits that City Carton provides the City of Musketeen sometime, no, obviously, not right this way?
Well, I mean, I can tell you, I certainly can tell you, they have provided numerous, I mean, our industries certainly rely on City Carton. They've also helped with us having our drop-off location, and we can provide you more things, Phil, if you'd like.
Okay.
Anyone else, council? Okay, we have a motion, a second, and discussion. This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an amendment to the Business Office Operations Agreement for Greenwood Cemetery. The only request changed to the current agreement is the addition of two years to the agreement, or July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016. The current service provider, Iowa Memorial Granite Company, has paid $600 per month and has met the expectations the agreement has outlined in the terms and conditions. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second, Scott, any discussion?
Mayor, I do have a question. Why, why are they only open 8 to 4:00 PM instead of 8 to 5:00 or maybe 8 to 6:00 to accommodate people that are just getting off work or et cetera?
Our agreement does not spell out the exact office hours, but they're available upon demand. There has been occasion where...
Excuse me, it's, there it is, item four, it says, IIMJC agrees to provide these services daily, Monday through Friday each week, beginning at 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, except holidays and during the term of this agreement.
Right, what I was trying to say is they don't require, we don't require by contract to be open until 5:00. I know they have come back in on occasion, or if somebody contacts us in the office, they'll show up at any time a family is in need.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I would just comment that, that I know the, I know the group that's doing this, and I've known them for a long time, and they're very accommodating to people's needs. They're very, very helpful. So I don't feel that you'd have any problem giving them a call, saying, "I want to meet you there at 6:00," or "7:00 at night," or "7:00 in the morning." I think they would be there.
And they have been.
Anyone else, council? Okay, thanks, Rich.
Yep.
Uh, this is a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an amendment to the Retail Sales and Service Agreement and Lease for Greenwood Cemetery. The request amended change to the current agreement includes extending the agreement by two years, July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016. Current service provider is Iowa Memorial Granite Company. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Bob, and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a purchase agreement for 804 West 7th Street. The city continues to make progress on Phase 2 of the West Hill Area Sanitation, Sanitary Sewer and Storm Separation Project, which has required the use and/or filling of a ravine area in the 700 blocks of West 6th and 7th Streets. The city has, the city has the potential to purchase two parcels containing a home and approximately four acres of real estate. City council discussed the value of owning the real estate for uses associated with this project and authorized staff to negotiate a purchase of the property. Negotiations have been completed, and the final offer of $125,000 for real estate and dwelling was accepted by the owner. It is staff's recommendation, city council approved the real estate purchase agreement for property located at 804 West 7th Street. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil?
Second.
Tom, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Item M. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve Task 1 Agreement for Engineering Services for the Airport Runway Reconstruction Project. This project is part of the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program for the airport. Anderson Bogart will provide the required professional services to design alternatives and complete the final design of this project. Runway reconstruction is the first priority as the city moves forward with this five-year CIP at the airport. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Osama, and a second?
Second.
Second, Scott, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, now to item 14, communication from council members, and as always, we'll begin with Councilman Reewol.
Nothing, your honor. Nothing, Mr. Mayor, I mean.
Phil?
Nothing at this time, your honor.
Scott?
Just a comment about all the construction. I know we have to, we're asking the public to be very patient to get through it, and I think it's all going to be worth it when we're done.
Osama?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nothing to the, Your Honor?
Tom?
Yeah, I would like to ask perhaps Randy to give us a brief update on the Cedar Street project, specifically as it pertains to when intersections will open, when those will close, because it's been brought to my attention that the information on the website is dated April. It's June. We need to do a little better of getting that information out to the folks.
You're right, we haven't updated it recently, and we should have, so that's on us. The Cedar Street, they pulled today the final part of the Param-Cedar intersection. Assuming that the cure time matures the way it has been, the Cedar-Param intersection should be open next week. And so that portion up to Stone Brook will be open. We will be closing Cedar Street from Hauser to Imperial Oaks beginning Monday, and that begins moving into the next phase of the project. So that is where we are. The main thing is that Cedar-Param will be open next week, and that should help an awful lot with traffic flow. As far as Colorado is concerned, you didn't ask about it, but it's the other project we have going on. The contractor will be pouring half the road from Park Avenue back to Plaza Place tomorrow. And again, given the cure time, then, they'll be able to get up next week on it and pour the other part of that road. That project's a little bit further behind. Cedar Street probably is only maybe a week behind John, something like that, so it's, given the weather, we, they've done pretty well with that. Colorado is not quite that fortunate. It's about a month behind schedule for reasons that I bore you with, but it's behind, and they're trying to get caught up.
That was initially like a July estimating?
Pardon me?
That was the contractor's-
Yeah, they're not going to be done in July.
I mean, originally estimated.
Yeah, originally, they were-
That was the contractor's-
They were optimistic with that, but DOT has given them until October to be done with it, so that's the difference between the contractor and what DOT sees as a final due date, so.
Thanks, Randy.
You're welcome.
Just, oh, sorry.
Greg?
Just a quick follow-up, though, there's a written updating you'll be getting tomorrow on that, too, that you certainly can share. Public Works has also been using Facebook as well to do a photographic and kind of an update of each of those projects. I'd encourage folks to go there. Couple items, I've only got three of these, but you'll get a digital version tomorrow in your mailbox. This is for the Iowa League Conference. If you're interested, please let Fran know as soon as possible, and we'll get you registered.
Where is it?
It's, uh, that's-
Council Bluff.
Oh, geez. He liked to drive.
Next week at our in-depth session, I'll be bringing forward a TIF small business program for discussion. The automated garbage discussion will be coming back in Mississippi Drive, Corridor, and Grandview. Projects will be back on for discussion.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Fran?
Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing.